Which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, and at that point, we'll call it to order. At this point, we'd like an approval of the agenda book board. If possible, I would like to add one item under discussion agenda E. Quick budget review. We've got a couple of budget topics we need to hit about our budget that we have submitted towards up the hill. Okay.
Make a motion, will you approve the amended agenda?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Good news. And we will start off with Dr. Taylor.
Good evening, board members. It is my privilege to announce that Ms. Crystal Cecil has been selected as the Stokes County Schools Employee of the Month for the month of April 2025. Ms. Cecil is a bus driver for Mount Olive Elementary School and Chestnut Grove Middle School. She has been with Stokes County Schools since 2018. Unfortunately, Ms. Cecil could not attend the meeting this evening. We will make sure that she receives her plaque and her award at one of her two schools. So once again, please join me in congratulating Ms. Crystal Cecil, the Stokes County Schools Employee of the Month.
And Dr. TH.
Good evening, board. We had a really wonderful Battle of the Books season this year. We are going to highlight our district winners, our middle school competition. We had Southeastern, Piney Grove, and, um, my goodness, I'm so sorry.
Chestnut Grove.
Chestnut Grove, so sorry. But our winner this year came out on top was Southeastern Middle School. So I will call the students' names up if you'll come up and see Dr. Rone here. Students on the team this year were Adam Manuel, Sarah Hooker, Hallie Holt, Braden Wilson, Brianna Strange, Garrett Tyndall, Kaylee Taylor, Ariana Carpenter, and Keela Agiri Jacobo. And their coach was Ms. Jenna Holt. They'll come on forward and we'll get a picture. For our elementary competitions, we hosted a prelim, and then we had three finalists come for our final competition. And this year, London Elementary came out on top. So our teammates for London Elementary included Wyatt Stoltz, Reece Stoltz, Ava Palumbo, Eli Tyndall, Olivia Bailey, Carson Adams, Callie Gentry, Aiden Grace, Cesar Manita, Sophia Welch, Willow Hedge, and Presley Williams. Our coaches for London include Chelsea Noah, Sarah Cornet, Annette Joyce, and Gracie Bray.
And that concludes the good news portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Consent agenda. The consent agenda tonight is the approval of the regular session minutes, March 24th, 2025. Oh, public comment.
Public comments.
Okay, my bad.
Good evening, Chair Rogers, the board, Superintendent. I am here today to talk with you and to ask and plead with you concerning the budget. So many small districts right now are having to make very tough decisions concerning the budget for the upcoming school year. Some of the things I want you to consider as you're looking at your budget is to make certain that we are not cutting any positions that our student faces that are providing direct support to our students and for our students being in Stokes County. It is important that we also have certified teachers in each of the classrooms in Stokes County. We need you to make certain that you're letting legislators know that as well. Because there's a bill out there saying that we can have 50% licensed teachers. It is, people went to school and learn how to present a curriculum and how to teach students. You know, people can love teaching, but they need to know what they're doing. And that's one of the things that happens when you go through a teaching program. You learn how to teach students and how to reach students. Everyone may have a desire, but everyone's not qualified to do so. And we need to make certain that we have qualified educators in the classrooms. Because the problem is not the fact that we don't have licensed teachers here in North Carolina. The problem is salaries. The problem is working conditions. And I'm not saying all of those exist here, but they do. I don't, I can only speak for myself. I transitioned here from a large district, and I have enjoyed my time here. But you need to look at the salaries here. Because we're not competitive with the surrounding districts. And how we do that is lobbying the county commissioners and asking them for the supplements. That's what most districts who have a better pay scale have done. And the last thing I just want to leave you with is asking you to not make any cuts, if that's all possible, to any of those positions. Because we know we need our bus drivers, we need our cafeteria workers, we need our students, we need our classroom teachers, we need our administrators, we need our student support throughout this whole district. And we all work together so nicely. And we want to continue to provide our students everything that they need. Because without us working together, it is not possible for us to achieve that. So please, 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 there are a lot of deals out there that are not good for public education. And I'm just asking you to just take a personal look at them and to actually advocate for some of those things not to be done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. Okay. All right. Then now moving on to consent, which is the approval of the regular session minutes, March 23rd, 2025, approval of budget work session minutes, March 29th, 2025, approval of work session minutes, April 7th, 2025, and approval of alternative schools modified accountability system. Now a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Um, any discussion?
Well, we have to, we'll discuss it after we have, uh, after it's brought to amendments, I mean, approval. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we got a second. Any discussion?
Um, just a question as far as, um, Dr. Rice. With our minutes, what is the norm for how we, you know, transcribe publicly recorded and televised minutes?
In regular sessions, we record, as tonight is being recorded, we use those recordings to go back and capture those for the special sessions, whether it's our facility tours that we take during the year or the budget work session, took notes throughout the meeting.
Okay. And I understand that, you know, there were not video or audio recordings with our budget meeting, but, um, and that we have like a more condensed minutes when they are televised, but should we have more, slightly more informative minutes when they're not being televised? You see what I'm saying? As far as, uh, with the meeting on March 29th, the budget work session? You know what I'm saying? It's a different situation than coming in here month to month or, um...
And again, when we've had special sessions in the past, whether it's the facility tours, we don't list everything that's discussed, our summary minutes of the purpose of the meeting and why we met, and that's what was done at this meeting as well.
Right.
And that's how I've been directed from the board in recent meetings to do more of summary minutes than line by line or just the overall themes, and so that's what was done.
Okay, just sharing that, you know, personally, I feel like it should be more thorough minutes if they're not, um, you know, video recorded.
And the results of that meeting were the...
Being that we were in a meeting setting, not to run a school.
And the results of that meeting were the budget documents that are public record.
Yes, sir. I just feel like there's lots of, uh, you know, informative discussion, um, you know, it just leads to a lack of transparency from the public, like who wanted what, who discussed different items maybe they felt strongly about or didn't and whatnot. It's just a lot of important details, I think, that, um, given it's a budget meeting, um, again.
Ms. Bennett, anything you want to discuss about that one?
I mean, yeah, I agree because, uh, like obviously there's things said that don't always stick with me as well, and it's hard to recall details, you know, of everything. And it might be interesting to some in the future, you know, to go back and look at that, have more details.
Mr. Robertson?
No, no questions.
Mr. Duncan?
I don't have anything.
Well, I think it needs to be brought to the attention, I mean, for perspective. It was a three-hour meeting that was a workshop.
Right.
If we met in every facility, we don't say there's a crack in that sidewalk that needs to be repaired. We don't present that in, in any meeting minutes we've ever done. Going into detail by the fact it wasn't recorded and it wasn't used for a political soapbox to stand on at a future meeting, I think it was a very productive meeting. We had honest, open discussion, knowing that not every spent, everything we said would be held against us in accord of public opinion. So with that, all those in favor of approval as noted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
All right, 3-2. Superintendent's report. Tonight, I want to present to you, uh, the teacher turnover report. This was recently made public from the Department of Public Instruction, and I'd like to go through it to, to talk about what it is, uh, as well as answer any questions that you may have. Each item in this is, is done in a certain format where I will go over the definition of the categories and then give how Stokes County did in those categories as compared to the state and the other, uh, and how our region, how we rank in the region, but also how our region ranks with the eight other regions. So the first item is state attrition. And there's a big, long definition in your pocket and on the screen, but basically if you say they started, they were working with us one March, and by the next March, they were no longer working in a North Carolina public school. So they left the profession. If they become an administrator, that doesn't count. Uh, or if they go to another public school unit like a charter school or whatever, that doesn't count against us. So Stokes County, we had a 7.57% attrition rate. That ranks the 25th best out of 115 districts in the state, and we were fifth out of 16 in our region. The state average for comparison was 9.88%. And the Piedmont Triad region combined for all 16 of those schools is 8.78, which is the second highest in this, of these regions in the state. The next one is mobility. And those are teachers who transfer from one school district, public school unit, to a different public school unit from March to March each year. This number for Stokes County is 5.68, which is ranked 64th out of 115th in the state, uh, 7th out of 16 in the region. The state average is 4.88%. And our region's percentage was 5.95%, which is 7th out of 8 in the state. That might bring up a question, is why is ours higher in that, in our ranking in the state? And why is the Piedmont Triad ranked so low in the state, 7th out of 8? And I think that, and, and this, the report doesn't draw those conclusions, but knowing what, we have a lot of districts that are close in proximity to each other. We also have, there are 15 city schools districts in the state of North Carolina. We have Lexington City, Thomasville City, Mount area City, Elkhorn City. We have a lot of city schools districts in our, and that makes Ashboro City. So we have a big proportion of city schools district where it's real easy to cross lines. And there's a lot of good school districts in this area, and there's varying degrees of pay in this area. So there's a lot of factors that could contribute to that mobility. I did break it down into the next two things of the teachers leaving Stokes County and where they went to. So we had two teachers go to the charter, to go to charter schools. One to Davidson County, three to Mount area City, one to Pender County, and one to Randolph County, one to Rockingham County, four to Surrey, six to Forsyth, and two to Yadkin, for a total of 13 people leaving us during that reporting period. For people coming to us during that reporting period, we had 19 people come to us through mobility. One from Davidson, one from Davie, one from Lee, one from Mount area City, six from Surrey, 11 from Forsyth, and two from Yadkin County. The next slide is a comparison of our bordering counties, which you would say is the highest rate of mobility typically are the ones that potentially we could control. Because, you know, if somebody goes to Pender County, that's probably a relocation issue. But the ones that touch us, bordering counties, we lost one to Rockingham County. We did not gain any from Rockingham County. We lost four to Surrey, we gained six from Surrey. We lost six to Forsyth, we lost, we gained 11 from Forsyth. And Yadkin County was two to two. So again, we lost 13 teachers to surrounding counties, and we gained 19. The last slide is the combined effect of mobility and state attrition in an LEA. And for Stokes County, we were at 13.24%, which was the 37th best in the state, and we were fifth out of 16 in the region. The state average for that is 14.76%. Uh, and the Piedmont Triad was 14.73, which is just average a fourth out of eight in the state. Um, actually, the last one was, uh, the, how we replace our teachers? And can we replace them with experienced educators? And so it, the report does not define what experienced means. I don't know if that's more than one year, or if they're out of a BT program, the state didn't define that. They just said replacing them with an experienced teacher. Stokes County Schools, we replaced our teachers during that reporting period at a 46.94% rate. So almost half of our teachers that we were able to, to replace teachers who left us were with experienced educators. That was the 18th highest in the state out of 115 and 5th out of 16 in the region. The state average was 26%, so roughly a fourth of their teachers are replaced with experience, and we got close to a half. And the Piedmont Triad is 31.8%, uh, 2nd out of eight district regions in the state. And then there's historical data on the final page to let you know how we rank in these categories throughout the years, since 2021 to 2024, which was the reporting period on the dashboard that was published. Are there any questions about the turnover report? Ms. Bennett?
Uh, I assume obviously, like you said, relocation slash, I mean, there's obviously many factors that play, right?
Sure.
Relocation, all that stuff, so...
And, and we work to have exit conferences with people to find out their reasons, to see if it's things that we can improve. Um, and, and we certainly listen to those and try to adjust based off the feedback.
Right, okay.
Ms. Knight?
No.
Okay. Mr. Robertson?
Uh, no, no questions really, but I just want to say, uh, congratulations to Dr. Rice and our staff. I think that I, in my mind, the way I look at these numbers, that they're very good. Um, you know, we're not the number one in the state in every category, but we wouldn't expect to be number one in every category either. But I think it speaks well for our environment here that we have, for our teachers and the, and the working conditions. And, um, I'm very pleased with that report. And I think it is a true reflection on Dr. Rice and Dr. Jones and all the administrators you see sitting around, and our principals and, and our teachers. And we, how many times have we had a teacher that leaves and go to Forsyth, and they're there for two or three weeks, and then here they come back, right? Stokes is a great place to work, uh, it's a great place to, uh, to have a career, and it's a great place to retire from. So, um, I see one of my old classmates here tonight, and, uh, and I think she went off into Georgia for a while, if I'm not mistaken, and came back, and she could probably be a testament as to, as to how great a place this is to work. Her mother was a teacher, and, and she's certainly followed in her footsteps and is doing a great job for us at London. So, so I want to thank all their, our teachers and, uh, and staff for such a great job that they do.
Thank you for that. Mr. Duncan?
I, I would echo the, the same thing there. I appreciate an opportunity to, to look at this and, and just focus real quick on, you know, this, I don't know what page, I don't think they're numbered, but even in areas that we did lose, uh, we were still positive, um, you know, in that. And, you know, you behind every of these numbers, there's a different situation, right? And so, um, if you look at this 30,000-foot view, um, you know, again, this is a, a great place. And I'm certain that there's some here tonight that would agree with that, that are currently working here and, um, that, that come back even after, after leaving. I'm assuming the 2022 recruitment that, or recoupment, that's a typo there, not 4.4%, correct? I mean, that was, or my...
That is what, what the report said.
Wow, okay.
But that was, that was 2022, so it was the year after COVID. So that could play a factor into that being a, a different number as well.
Okay. I just, that stood out to me, I mean, and you can tell we, we, and this is for Stokes, correct? This, this back page here?
Uh, yes, sir.
So I mean, we've, we've definitely, I think, going in the right direction with recruiting not just teachers but experienced teachers. So I think that's a great work, and as Ms. Mays mentioned in, in her comments, you know, I do think it takes the entire community, and, and it's not just at, at one level of, of making this a success. So, good work.
One thing I'll add, and again, as Ms. Mays stated, we're gaining almost two to one over Forsyth County, and our supplement is 50%. So we know we have, we don't offer the financial incentive. We can't, we're just not that type of county. But we offer the work environment that the money isn't everything comes to, to play. Could we get more money? Oh, yeah. I, I, not gonna argue with you a bit. But it's good to see, and, and thank you for that, so. With that being said, we'll move on to the discussion agenda. Spring policy update, Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if you will look at the outline there in your notebook, I want to jump through these briefly with you tonight. And I want to make, I want to highlight some of the policies that are included in the school board's... Association, uh, policy update. Let me start out by saying that we are ahead of the game. If the board remembers, we purposely did not adopt the new changes in 2024 to the Title IX regulations. We did not adopt the subs, the substantive changes, the Biden administration substantive changes to Title IX. The only changes we adopted were the procedural changes. So, you know, the school boards association has drafted these on a statewide basis. So some of these don't apply to us because we didn't change our policies. We stayed with the old policies. So as I say, we were ahead of the game. We don't have to go back now and modify ours because we didn't modify them to begin with. They're now going back because the new regulations under the Trump administration go back to the 2020 rigs, which we always kept. So we don't have to go back and modify those. So, if you will bear with me, the changes, uh, the first one there, 1310, 4002, those changes are mandated by North Carolina statute and federal law. So we are obligated to make those changes. But the next one, 1510, 1710, I'm just reading the first number because they're, they're, they're in, they have three numbers there. 1720, 1725, 1726, and 1735, we are in compliance. We stayed with the old ones, so we're okay there. 2302, 02, and 2342 are the same thing. We have always, if a person is participating remotely and that person votes, that person voices the vote. We always vote by roll call for those that are not here physically and are voting remotely. So we're doing that anyway. 3225, technology responsible use. I'm gonna, uh, defer to Dr. TH on this policy. Anything dealing with technology, we're gonna ask for her input on that. But I think we really want to do this because it enables us to use our E-rate funds for this. this form of technology. So we definitely want to do that in order to use our E-rate funding. The next policy, thirty-four hundred, here again is an academic decision. It, it, it allows us, it, it, it's whether or not we want to follow the state board policy on the grade scale. It, it gives us, it's mandatory for, to use the new state board policy on grading for high school and middle school, as I understand it. But the local board has flexibility for the grading scale in the elementary schools. So we're gonna defer to the recommendation from Dr. Rice on do we want to modify our elementary school grading scale. Thirty-four twenty, student promotion and accountability, there's some flexibility there also for the grading scale on elective courses. We can go strictly on a pass fail. And there again, that's gonna be the recommendation of the administration on how we wish to grade elective courses. The new policy on NIL. The state board has developed a policy now for our athletes who may have an NIL contract. Never thought we'd get our athletes that are signing contracts with Nike or whomever, but it's there. So this allows us to adopt the state board policy for our athletes that may have contracts. Here again, four oh two three is again a Title IX, but here again, we are still, we are already there with it. Forty forty is a state board policy that we are required to follow. That one, forty forty, and forty-two forty are requirements now that the superintendent and principals must report to the state superintendent disciplinary action taken against licensed employees. That's done in order that the state superintendent may determine whether or not to revoke the license of a teacher or an administrator for inappropriate conduct. Sixty-two twenty is a school nutrition policy that's based upon a requirement from the United States Department of Agriculture. So we are required to follow that. Sixty-three thirty is a student insurance requirement that we must keep our leased vehicles or any rented vehicles properly insured. Well, we definitely want to do that anyway. Seventy-one thirty is the, the same policy that we've had previously. Again, the same requirement that we report to the state superintendent, any licensed employee that has been suspended without pay or terminated in lieu of resignation. That again is another policy that enables the state superintendent to consider possible license revocation. All the others are those that only the references have been changed. So it's my recommendation that we adopt the policy recommendations of the School Boards Association, that we put this on a subsequent meeting for action, that we request the input of the administration as far as the grading options that are available, that we seek the advice of Dr. TH as far as the E-rate policy. And as I say, I'm glad that we had the foresight not to change our Title IX regulations. And that's the ten minute summary.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Bennett, do you have any questions?
Not at this time.
That's a lot to take in.
It's a lot.
Ms. Knight?
Um, no, thank you for reviewing all those threads. And did I see there's links or further reading that we can do maybe?
Yes, ma'am. The, uh, the next page in your packet, in your electronic packet, you have access to the drive and in the materials, it has both a link if you want to type that out or you can take a picture with your phone with the QR code that will take you to that link as well.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Robertson?
Uh, no questions. It sounds like it, we're already where we need to be and, and I attribute that to Mr. Johnson and he's, he looks after us very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Duncan?
Yeah, I appreciate the, the work that you do and, and kind of guiding us in, in through that Title IX. I'm assuming we need to move this to action tonight?
It needs to sit there thirty days.
Okay. It'll be on the approval agenda for the next regular scheduled meeting.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay. One thing I've got is you went tongue in cheek on NIL and you wore a University of Tennessee orange tie. Is that part of, part of after the NIL debacle they had last week?
I think that's a no comment.
He's a Wake Forest man. We don't like that, see.
Thank you again, Mr. Johnson. Okay, moving on to discussion of athletic budgets. Dr. Jones, enlighten us with your wisdom.
I appreciate the time, Chairman Rogers and board. I, while the title of this discussion item is athletic budgets, and we'll certainly discuss that, it does go a little bit deeper than just athletic budgets. And so it ties directly to a line item on the budget request that we have submitted for new football helmets across the district. That's for middle and high schools. And so I want to give you a little bit of context on why that item was in, in our proposal and, and in the, the capital budget that you reviewed. So back in the fall, Dr. Rice approached me after we had seen trends and numbers decline, not only here but across statewide in conversations with the superintendents and athletic directors. And he came to me about wanting to really tackle safety for our student athletes. And so we convened a meeting, matter of fact, a couple of meetings with our athletic directors, football coaches and principals. And we had great conversation during those meetings about steps that we could take at the district level and at the school level to prioritize student safety and ultimately ensure and build confidence in parents that safety is a priority in a very, sometimes can be a rough sport and one that is, is highly physical. And so in, in discussing player safety, we determined that one way to hit this head on, no pun intended, would be to purchase new helmets for our, our schools and our And so I'm gonna hit a couple of different pieces here tonight. You will see in your packet, this is an example of a product that Rydell helmets provides. Their top of the line helmet is the Axiom helmet, okay? And in that helmet comes Insight Technology, which provides an unbelievable amount of data daily to our coaches. You know, that, that, we know and understand that there's no piece of equipment that's going to guarantee a student's always gonna be safe a hundred percent. So what we can do is try to equip our coaches and, and players with technology and safety equipment that will inform their practices, the way they organize practices, how much they're hitting in practice to be able to hopefully avoid student injury. And so our, our schools right now utilize, and, and I think just about across the board, use Rydell helmets. However, only very few have the Insight Technology and use the Axiom helmet. Most of them use the, the grade below the Axiom. The Axiom is the top of the line with the five star rating helmet. And so we have explored that, that option. And so in discussing with Dr. Rice and our ADs and principals, it's nearly impossible for a school to purchase all new helmets in one year because of the price. And so we spoke with Rydell and gave them a number, two hundred and sixty helmets, and, and that's reflected in the budget number of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we proposed in the capital outlay budget. That's across the board that would equip all of our students in, in new, new helmets, safer helmets with better technology. And so I think everybody in this room or on this board has been involved in high school athletics to some level and knows not only the importance of high school athletics in terms of impacting kids academically, their attendance rate is higher when they're involved in sports, but also from a revenue standpoint, the admission that's created, or the revenue created from gated admission is about half in football alone that, that the gated admission that the entire school brings, right? And so it does generate quite a bit of revenue for, for the entire athletic program. And so we, with that, we also understand there's extreme cost. You know, I can, I can say that confidently that when you look at the expenses of our athletic programs versus just the revenue generated off gated missions, we're in the red across all schools. It just costs that much money to be able to, to outfit our, our student athletes with the right equipment across, across the entire department to keep up all our facilities, field maintenance, paint, official security. It's, it's very, very expensive. And so with that, I'll give you some information. Our schools right now spend total, three middle and three traditional high schools spend between twenty and twenty-five thousand dollars on reconditioning costs each year. Our helmets have to go get reconditioned every year, okay? In addition to that, they spend another twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars in purchasing new helmets, helmets who have expiration dates that expire or helmets they have to replace due to a crack or something else that, that comes up. And so it's between forty and fifty thousand dollars our schools are spending each year on football helmets. And so this hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we have brought to you all for, for these new helmets, the Rydell Axiom helmets, does include two years of reconditioning cost. That would be, that's a burden taken off of our athletic departments and football programs for two years. And there would not be a need to, to purchase new helmets during those two years because none of them would expire and, and go off the shelf, if you will. And so there's a lot of components and reasons why this was put on our capital budget request, but primarily is safety. And so with that, if, if this is approved, and we're gonna ask for your approval this evening, if, if it's your pleasure, but football's cranking up with spring workouts right now. And so we want to make sure that these helmets, which are custom fit, they come in and scan each kid's head and they're custom fit to, to their, each individual student athlete. And so they need time for that to be able to have a, a parent night, host a parent night, inform parents, let them see the technology, let them feel the helmet, see them and be able to outfit our student athletes in these helmets. And so I'm not sure if you had a chance to look through the, the PowerPoints that are in your packet, I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have, but I think that all the way around, not only from a, the burden it would lift from our football programs and athletic departments as a whole monetarily and then two, the safety features that are involved with this technology is a reason that it was put before you and, and one of the reasons why we're asking for it to be approved ahead of time so that we can begin that, that work. And I've spoken to Ms. Moore and Dr. Rice and we do have capital funds set aside and saved from other projects that we can use on this purchase.
Before we go to questions, I just want to weigh in because I sat in and, and he's gone the long way around this, but it's very thorough. The Insight Technology, what it does, it doesn't instantly send a message to say the kid just had a concussion. What it does is it says, it sends, and we set the timeframe, it sends the data out to say, this helmet has received X amount of blows of a certain criteria over the week. So we know whether the student athlete is in poor form, high stress, high repetition. It's something to keep a look at so that the coaches are better prepared to prepare the student athlete for the field of play. And also it, it allows them to monitor those students that could be just physically tackling wrong to prevent on, long-term concussions. I went because I was, I'm a football dad. As a dad of a junior at South Stokes, I spent the money on the Zenith helmet because I saw that the helmet he was wearing cracked on the field. And unfortunately, at that point, the first responder said, well, just don't play offense, go ahead and play defense. That was a breakdown in the system. This hopefully will catch the system. Plus, as a father of the head of the Wake Forest sideline medicine, you know, I hear a lot about concussions in these research. These helmets are teaching tools, they're not necessarily a, gonna prevent all concussions. But the other thing is in Florida where it's been implemented system-wide, the takeaway was roughly ten to fifteen percent increased participation. Stokes County is on a twenty-four percent over three-year slide. So we, we've got less people playing because more people are concerned about concussions. This may be a way to make mom and dad feel a little more comfortable.
Yep.
I'm not proposing that we do it not, I'm just giving you the, the layman's terms because I sat in on the presentation from both Rydell and SHUT. The coaches are under the wish that they could have these as, especially Jason Salmons. He saw an increase in participation and reduction in concussions when he implemented them at Chestnut Grove, implemented them. So there's that validity there. My personal feelings is if we spend it, then the school will have to have that data sent not only to the coach, but the first responder because we need a check and balance to make sure it's, it's actually looked at and implemented if we so choose.
With that being said, I'll open it up for questions. Ms. Bennett, do you have any, or Dr. Rice, did you, do you want to add something? I, I would like to add a, a little bit. The question may be, well, why not just implement it in the normal helmet replacement program? And why do it all at once district-wide? And Ms. Rogers is correct. Chestnut Grove made an investment a couple of years ago into some safer equipment. To me, it's not a good thing as a superintendent that one set of kids are safer than others. And if we replace them in a normal, over a ten-year cycle and you replace ten percent a year, a school gets the new helmets this year, then you determine which ten percent of your football players get the safer helmets or the data helmets and then next year, which twenty percent get them, next year, which third, why, if my kid's playing, why not, why don't my kid get a good helmet? My kid matters to me, too. The other thing is buying in bulk, we get a substantial savings. And so it, it worked about two hundred dollars per helmet in savings. So if we did a slow program, we're gonna end up spending a lot more money over a longer period of time. And so those are the two reasons why the push to do district-wide at once for everybody's safety at each school, each student at each school and the substantial discount.
And when in bulk, for comparison, that helmet that you're seeing the picture of is a seven hundred dollar helmet. The next step down is the five hundred dollar helmet. So you're buying the seven hundred dollar helmet for the price of the five hundred dollar helmet. And in essence, if we're spending fifty thousand a year and the first two years are covered in that purchase, it's a fifty thousand dollars more for everybody to not have to say, well, I got the hand-me-down helmet, you got the good one. So, Ms. Bennett?
Just after the two years of, that are covered, is it the same cost to do them to?
Yeah, it's, it's very, it's very comparable to what our schools are paying now for reconditioning.
So it doesn't go?
There's a slight increase because they replaced the batteries in the helmets that have the technology, but?
Yeah.
It's negligible.
Well, I don't see, I mean, two football players right here, so I'm all for it. Be a good thing.
I know what the CT scan costs that day, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Ms. Knight?
I think this sounds great. I'm definitely for it. I'm just not sure if I'm ready to, you know, jump to action with it. I, I... I, I would just maybe like a little more time to look into it if that wouldn't, you know, delay in your purchasing or being ready for like a football season, that's all. You know what I mean? As far as if it, if it waited or whatever.
So I would say sooner the better. We are getting into May and schools are already, yeah. So schools are already beginning, if they had already foot workouts and stuff like that. And so our helmets that were reconditioned still have the tags on them, right? So if, if, you know, if we use those, we might lose a little bit of money on the helmets we had reconditioned from last year. But it does take some time to get 260 kids fit and turn around into helmets. And so sooner the better.
The way it was described to me, the way it was described to me is the helmets have already been sent off for reconditioning. So Rydell would put a halt to that and ship new ones back. Or it's $50,000 is what we're looking at now if we, if we delay until we buy. The reconditioning and...
Hang on to the 50?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're just putting 50,000 or 20, at least 25, 25,000 is, is what delaying extensively would cost.
So roughly right now, without the smart technology and the advancements, what is a Rydell helmet currently? I know you mentioned...
Yeah, it's around $500 is what our schools are...
One without the, without all the bells and whistles.
Currently, we're paying that.
Currently, we're paying...
Or it's the athletic boosters and whatever they can raise and pay per school, right?
It's multiple revenue streams. And one other piece of information, you know, our, our schools, it costs money to run programs. And our schools, to run a football game on a Friday night costs $1,500 to $2,000 before you even kick off. By the time you have paint, field maintenance, security, officials, upwards of $600. So it adds up. So this is a big burden that, yes, boosters sometimes does have to, to help pay and offset costs, fundraisers, you know, teams fundraise money and stuff. So it would certainly be a burden lifted from our, our sports teams and departments.
And then how would the process work of scanning each year? I mean, right, would they come in and rescan or is that a contractual thing? You know, is, is do players come up and want to participate?
Yeah, so they can be, once they're fit to a student's head, barring a student's head growing substantially, it would, it would carry on with them throughout middle school and then throughout high school, but they would come back and make adjustments each, each year.
You're not like, it's not a, it's not a inflated and, you know, crash test dummy, you're one size forever.
Correct. Yeah, so like a senior this year, well, he's going to graduate after, after next year. Well, that, that'll come back in and refit that helmet for that student, or a new student that comes up.
They're just changing the pads on the inside.
Yeah.
It sounds a lot more intricate, sounds...
And my other was, what positively, what positive have you seen on recruiting? And you mentioned you, at the presentation...
15 to 18% is what a Florida district saw when they went Axiom district-wide. For Rydell now, again, it was a salesman giving a speech. I'm a salesman, you know, I know, but...
So there's always the chance, you know, that we do this and there's no upswing in participation, but across the board, your students are...
There's, there's a chance, but I will say there's a couple of things I want to mention. One, from '22 to 2023, we declined 25% in participation.
Say that again?
25% decline in football participation from '23 from '22. And then the decline from '22 to '24 was 16%. So we're seeing numbers decline. Two years ago, Pine and Grove had a team, they have not had one in the past couple of years. And so, you know, we're hopeful, we're hopeful that giving parents a sense of security and safe, safety will increase participation. And, you know, when you speak of fundraisers and, and revenue that booster clubs generates without football, they're probably not generating as much revenue in some areas, right? I know West Oaks High School generated some funds for weight room renovation, you know, without the impact of football. I don't know that they're able to raise that amount of money. They may, they may not, but...
And you would say that, I mean, from all your high schools in the county, you have consensus that this would lift a huge burden? Have you spoke with each of them, the athletic...
Yeah, we spoke to A Ds and coaches. And then two, I just...
And middle schools, basically.
Yes, they were in on that as well. The one other piece I'll add, the Denver Broncos Foundation, you may have seen it on the news, they just recently purchased these helmets for the entire state of Colorado, which is pretty substantial. If you were to Google that, you'll find the article, but they, their foundation purchased these for all the students. And so that's another layer there of confidence from NFL program.
And then the number that we're considering purchasing was 200 and...
260. What that is is last year's...
Is that more than covers middle and high or is there a potential...
I hope we have to order more.
Okay, okay.
I mean...
If we did run into it, we could.
We hope the schools have to order more. We're not spending any more money.
Okay, okay.
And they'll have some money to do that if we, if we lift this burden. But yeah, so I took last year's numbers and increased those anywhere from five to 12 helmets, depending on the program, the side of the school, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Knight?
No, sir.
Mr. Robertson?
I think it's, I think it's a good thing from, you know, back in the younger days when I participated, I would see injuries and, and of course, things have changed a lot from then until now. But, you know, back in, a lot of times, coaches weren't aware of the injuries, and I think this really brings it to the forefront, helps the coaches. And I don't want us to be misguided. I mean, I don't think, in my mind, I don't think we're looking into purchasing these helmets for, to try to increase our participation. If it increases, great, but safety is a forefront of the, of the reason we're doing it. And if we can keep the student athletes a little safer, make it a little bit better, and if it does help the parents out and, and let their child participate and feel more comfortable with that, then that's a bonus. But I think safety is a reason we're doing it, and I'm all for it. I think it's great. And it does take a huge burden lifted from the, from our schools that we can do it here. And I let them maybe spend that money on something else until, you know, for the first couple of years anyway, until it comes back around, and then they'll, I hope they'll be able to pick up this program and go with it going forward. So it seems like a lot of money and, you know, at first, I kind of scratched my head about it thinking, you know, do we really want to do this? But yeah, I think it probably is the best thing. If we're going to offer the sport, then we need to do our part in making it as safe as we can for our students.
Thank you. Mr. Duncan?
So taking some notes over here, first, I, I do agree that this is a step in the right direction from a safety standpoint. Few, few questions I got, and I think about the 260 kids that are affected by it currently, and if we increase participation, that's, that's great as well. Those, those drops, the 25 and 16, is that district-wide or is it...
It's across the district.
Okay. And so that 150, does that include the, the marking of each school or the painting, the markup, all that's included?
It does.
And so...
Now, what it may not include is a decal, but, you know, a program wants to add a decal to the helmet, they can add their own decals.
Right.
It covers the base paint of the helmet.
And it covered the basic paints, now any...
It's someone with a chrome or...
Yeah, if they want chrome or something like that.
That's up to that school to buy.
That, that school's got to cut a check, not us.
So they'll paint them green, maroon, and...
Correct.
Okay, perfect. All right. So going forward, we got two years of reconditioning costs that's deferred. You said that they come out now and they'll fit, but that's a fitting every year. That, is that included in that two years that they come out for two years at no cost?
Correct.
But after that two years, they'll have to...
Well, so the same company reconditions them, and so they, they will come out and refit as we need. Adrian Snow, he's a local guy, used to coach at West Forsyth. He's local, and, and he is more than happy to come up yearly and refit helmets. That's part of this agreement and partnership with, with them.
I just want the three years, look, looking ahead, those, those students that are getting those helmets then are, are just as good as the ones we're getting now.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. That makes sense. Maybe we need to reach out to the Panthers since Denver did theirs. Anybody want, I don't have a number to call, but...
They take my money, they don't, they don't give me anything.
But I, I think, now, I did have one other question. So this, these stats, and I'm all, I like numbers and figures. So does that come to the parent as well or just the, just the coach?
No, so it comes to the coach. And again, what it's intended to do is, this is not concussion-proof helmets.
Right.
They are extremely safe helmets and much safer than they have been in years past. But we're still going to go through, anytime a student gets hit or hits someone, we're going to go through the same concussion protocol we, we do now with our trainers and athletic staff and coaches. And so this is not to replace anything, this just is to provide an extra layer of data to support and, and inform our, our coaches. And so they get these reports daily, they'll have a, a tablet and it comes with a subscription that they'll get these, this information reports daily.
Okay. I do think it would increase maybe the, the player's competence, you know, going out and, and doing that. I'm for it. I mean, I, I did, I was like Mr. Robertson when I saw it on the, the line item, you know, for, for that much money, which I've never bought a football helmet, so, you know.
That's a good price, trust me.
Yeah.
I've got the dust catcher on my house, at my house.
And parents don't have an option, or do they have an option to buy? I mean, they...
They do currently.
They, they do, but again, that becomes the, we're going to have better safety for the people that can afford it versus the one that can't. And that's why, again...
No, I'm saying, but I mean, going forward, if they wanted to buy these, they, they could, okay, got it.
Once we sta, once we standardize on a helmet, they could buy that helmet.
Sure.
But now, that, what, what has to happen, because it happened to us, you buy it, you give it to the school so that it is painted and reconditioned with the understanding that upon graduation, you can either give that helmet to the school or you can request it back.
Okay.
But it has to become the school's property so that it goes into the school inventory and is treated as such.
Gotcha, okay. Well, I appreciate the work. I'm, I'm excited to see it in, in place.
One other question, any of the like, if there were, say, I T issues or something that goes along with this, they, I mean, have their own, you'd reach out, the coaches could...
Ongoing support. Yes, ma'am.
The only thing I'll add, and I've said enough, I mean, Mr. Robertson and I played in probably leather helmets, so we're that old. I was thinking that. As you can tell, neither one of us had a face mask. But what would scare me the most as a board is if we don't implement it and one school does and two schools don't.
I agree with that.
How do we say this school loves their kids more and student athletes more than this one? And how do I say, you can't go play, you can't transfer and go play at a school that has a better safety equipment than you have at your school? So with that, with that being said, I'm going to turn it over and I'll entertain a motion to move this to action.
I'll make a motion to move purchasing the needed riddle helmets to...
Rydell.
Rydell, Rydell. You can tell I'm not a football player. Rydell to action. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed becomes action item C. Discussion of policy, policy 7440, assignments, reassignments, and transfers. Dr. Rice?
Yes, sir. Mr. Robertson and I had a conversation after a recent board polling, which moved a classified, allowed a classified employee who was working in one capacity to move to a different classified position in a different capacity. Mr. Rogers and I had a conversation about why, when, that our policy already gives us the authority, me the authority, to assign school employees in any manner that he or she deems appropriate, consistent with legal requirements. So for example, if somebody does not have a C D L, I can't force them to do something where they would not have a C D L. And so I have to do legal requirements, certifications, those type of things. But in those type of situations, again, we had a specific need where we needed a monitor on a bus with a student. So we polled the board quickly to try to make that happen when our policy already gives us that authority. So discussed it with Mr. Johnson, he agreed, but since that could be a change, I didn't want you surprised, I wanted to have the conversation here, that that policy already gives me that authority. Chairman Rogers has requested that and wanted to present that tonight so for this change of practice to can follow our current policy as written.
So the boards are wearing, I'll, I'll weigh in, then we can discuss it. I mean, like he said, he could, he can assign a employee to work at a different school tomorrow, but he couldn't say, okay, yeah, you can be the bus monitor, because the bus monitor we had is out, we have to have a board poll for that. Well, what happens if three of us are not available? We can't have a bus monitor, so it's an assignment, a change in assignment of duties. And in talking to Human Resources and Dr. Taylor, who's been a superintendent in two other school systems, everybody else just, that's part of his job. It's, it's operations of day-to-day. He can cancel school, but he can't ask somebody to be a bus monitor. It just didn't make sense. So I'm like, I'm all for, let's make our life simpler, let's eliminate H R having to get involved to spend the time to poll us, for us to get back, to poll him so that he can do his job. This is, this to me was a no-brainer. But Ms. Bennett, you're free to disagree.
I do a little bit. I think that I, I like being aware of the changes, and then like, if, if a change has to hap, I understand the efficiency, I get that part, but, oh, by the way, we move them, like you said, tomorrow, and we don't know anything about it. Just being in that no, I think is nice. And typically, we respond pretty quick, I think, like through a message or email or whatever, we get right back to it, so.
Well, in that polling, Dr. Taylor, only three responded that day, correct?
I'd have to go back and look. We had three within probably an hour and a half or so. Once we get three, we move forward. But there have been occasions where it did take a couple of days to move.
Well, and I think in that case, if you don't hear back in a reasonable time, okay, go ahead and move forward, but I just, I don't know, I think being in the no is a little bit better.
Okay. Ms. Knight?
With, with these changes, could a budgetary or a dollar figure go along with them? Or not necessarily? Is this always people that are already like employed or is it positions that could arrive?
It's people that are already employed, but it could be a slight change for a, a couple of hours, like a bus driver pay may be different from their teacher assistant pay. But for those couple of hours, when they're taking on that extra responsibility, they may get a bus driver pay for those couple of hours, but they're still in their regular employment of making that, that salary that they've, that already been stated.
I mean, I have to agree that I like knowing, you know what I mean, whether it's, you know, I've had occasions where someone's totally, you know, moved from a school or a position's eliminated unbannounced, you know, to me, and then you have to hear about it, you know what I mean?
I still have that thought.
Weeks and things down, down the road, you know? And I would just, again, out of common courtesy as a board member, like to know when things get phased out or moved or whatever. So I would not want to lose that line of communication or, you know, just keeping that open rather than, you know, delay, you know, and us hearing later on and kind of being surprised by changes and whatnot. I mean, I can kind of see the, this is urgent, we need this person to step over and do this job. I, I just don't know, I'm sure there's situations other than the one you're describing that could fall into this potentially.
We, we've had situations with like coaches that have resigned abruptly, and we need an athletic director to step in and be the coach for the final week of the season, where again, waiting is days out of practice or potentially a game, or there are just times when time is extremely of the essence, that where, again, they're already employed, the board has employed them, so a slight change in assignment to be efficient is what's, what's being discussed. It's not bringing in somebody new off the street that the board is not employed. It is just already people that are already employed, potentially a change in assignment. And I don't anticipate this happening, you know, 20 times a month. It's, it's a rare occurrence when it happens.
Right. That could be teachers, anybody.
Right now, it's that way with teachers anyway. I mean, I can take teacher A and move her to school B, and that does not require board approval. And, and that is, again, the current, the current policy as it is. That doesn't change that. This is not asking for that. That doesn't change that, this is not asking for that, that's already approved. It's a different assignment, it's asking a, you know, again, and we're not looking to force people to do things against their will either. It's when somebody says, hey, I'm willing to do this, can we make this work? And we just need to move somebody quickly to allow them, a current employee, a different assignment. Or an additional assignment.
Okay, no other questions?
Mr. Robertson?
So you're really not asking us to change a policy?
No, sir.
Our policy is already set this way, and I don't see anything wrong with it, I think it's good. I think our board is not here to get involved in day to day operations. That's not, that's not the function of this board, is to be in day to day operations. And I hate to break it to everybody, but there's a ton of stuff that goes on at every school, every day, that we have no idea about. And we couldn't keep up with it if we tried to, there's no way. So I think we've got great administrators, they do a great job. I say, keep doing your job the best you can, and if you need us, if you need an opinion from us about anything, you can ask us. But otherwise, our, the main task of this board is to hire and fire the superintendent and to set policy and to set the budget. Is that correct, Dr. Rice?
And judicial functions went for hearings.
That's our job, our job is not day to day operations. If something important comes up, I think we, I think our communication is very good. I mean, just about every day, we'll get an email, you know, emergency services was called to such and such school, you know, or something happened at that school that was, you know, that we may need to know about. And I think they do a great job keeping us informed on that, and I think if there was something big came up that Dr. Rice had to make some changes and some movement, and, you know, if it was, if it rose to the level that he thought we needed to know about it, I think we'd probably get an email about that, and we'd still be in the know. But they can't let us know everything that happens day in and day out. So I like the policy, and I think they do a great job, and I'm all supportive of it.
Mr. Duncan?
If I'm reading this right, by you asking for a board poll, we're not actually following our current policy. Yes, sir. Correct, yeah. It says the superintendent may assign, and that's what we're asking and talking about, is assigning. Transfers is a whole different, which, if you read above, all assignments and transfers of employees to schools are responsibility of, not the board, but the superintendent. Inside the building is principals, the board must be notified, not polled, notified. Superintendent may assign school employees in any manner that he or she deems appropriate, consistent with legal requirements. But so by you polling us, we're not following our own policy, am I looking at that correct, Mr. Johnson? So I'd say we go by our policy.
I mean, it's pretty clear, I wanted to clean it up to start with, I thought it was ludicrous for us to have to do that when we're not even following our own policy, we're just creating extra steps of work. Now, if we wanna create extra steps of work, we gotta go back and revisit seventy-four forty and rewrite it to say we need to micromanage the superintendent, and if so, you've got my resignation, I'm out.
So, okay, and I will note right here, an employee may appeal a transfer decision to the board. And I think every time anything, any of that happens, if they're not getting results, then they're at liberty to come and as a hearing or however, how it may be, correct? Yes, sir.
Okay, so moving on, basically, the wheels fell off the bus sometime, we start overthinking seventy-four forty, let's rethink how we do things. Okay, next one's twenty-three thirty.
Yes, sir, again, I'm not asking for a change in policy, I'm letting you know of a change in practice. When discussing the agenda, as you know, the board chair gets to help work to set the agenda for the evening. And tonight, we have something different on our agenda, is, on the action agenda, is the approval of, the B is approval of Stokes County budget amendments. Normally, we discuss amendments, and then a lot of times, you will ask Ms. Moore, would you like to move that? Do we need to move that now? And she says it sure would help. And so rather than going through that extra step at each meeting, Chairman Rogers has asked me to place the budget agenda amendments on the action item, and after we get a motion and a second for that, if there's discussion that needs to take place, it can. If the board wants to table that for further discussion, you still have that option, or to go ahead and approve it. But rather to start in one place, get a motion and a second to move it to the other place, then get a motion and a second to do it again, again, Mr. Rogers is trying to streamline meetings and asked me to do that, which is in the purview of policy twenty-three thirty. And so I just wanted to bring that to your attention tonight as a change of practice, but not a change in policy.
Is that just for tonight, or is that going forward?
Moving forward.
If we know, to me, if the chair knows that we're gonna vote on it and it's gonna have to wind up in action, why don't we start somewhere else to get to the end, let's start at the end and then discuss it and vote on it there? Because what happens is, we start on discussion and we talk about it for fifteen minutes, and then we say, do we need to move it to action? And they say, yes, so it's going to action anyway. Let's just start in action, discuss it, and then we don't have to go through the effort of polling the board and do we need to, do I have a motion, do I have a second? All those in favor, by aye, let's go to the, let's go to where it's gonna wind up and do it right.
And just like always, you'll have the materials in your packet in advance, we deliver those on Thursday, they're electronic. You have the time to look through those, if you have any questions, you can reach out to us in advance or be prepared in the meeting after the motion and the second to still ask the questions you have.
And I've also told him, you know, the way work sessions were set up, if we were gonna send it to action, we would discuss it at the work session and put it on the action agenda for the regular meeting. And somehow, we started having, everything goes to discussion again, and then we start doing it again. I'm just trying to streamline it, because all these directors don't need to be here excessive amounts of time, just to hear us talk.
The only thing, I mean, just to have a little more time to think about something, but, I mean, I get...
It's still in the packet, it's just which tab it is in the packet.
Right, right.
And again, just because it's on action doesn't mean we have to approve it, we can table it. I'm just trying to stop the start somewhere, get somewhere, you can't get there from here, you gotta go somewhere else and begin, that's kinda redundant, but...
Yeah.
We can change the policies, again, if y'all want to, but we're, I'm more for enforcing what we've got than trying to reinvent the wheel.
But it does go to policy twenty-three thirty, the chairperson and superintendent will prepare the agenda. And so that's what Mr. Rogers has asked me to do, is prepare the agenda with that change. We just wanted to bring it to your attention, so you didn't, at the end of the meeting, say, why don't we do this different tonight? It's because that's the way the agenda was prepared tonight.
Ms. Knight, you got anything to add?
I mean, historically, you know, we try to review things, I understand a little bit of the redundancy of maybe moving. I feel like we're sort of trying to stick with the work session, new items, right? Discuss it then, act on it at the next, so I'm not opposed to that, I just don't think if something's new, you know, that it go right onto the action agenda, it just seems like historically...
Well, historically, this is how we used to do it.
When you roll into...
Sometime between two thousand fourteen and eighteen, it changed.
Okay. So I like the delay personally, you know what I mean? It's just not right on action, you've at least got that discussion period at the one meeting and then further time to review, do some more research if needed, and then vote on an item. Versus the Thursday to Monday, you know, that you may or may not have, depending on what your crazy life is like, you know, to further review something that's on action.
On this item, it was a budget, and ninety-nine percent of when she presents it, we move it to action that night anyway. That's the reason I put this one on action, anything that's gonna take in-depth discussion, yeah. But this is a budget that we have to get, it's gonna wind up on action either way, because Ms. Moore, you're gonna need this voted on tonight, aren't you?
Yeah.
And let's say, in situations, this applies in any situation, whether it's a contract or anything, you know, does that give Fred enough time to review, you know what I'm saying, things that he may need to review when they're just on action? That was a concern.
Well, I view it as the responsibility of the chair to ensure the integrity of the board. I personally would never put anything on there that I didn't think had time to be discussed. But I know if it's gotta be acted on this week, we might as well start where we're gonna finish. And if y'all don't agree at that point, y'all can say no, we'll table it. Mr. Johnson? Right.
There are certain items that are required to be on for two meetings, that's, you know, your policies, for example. If it's a new policy, it does have to sit for thirty days. On your budgets, there are some boards that put budget amendments on the consent agenda. It's sent out a week in advance and then it goes on the consent agenda, rather than on a discussion or an action agenda, so. I think the idea is, if we're gonna have two meetings, we discuss it at the work session and then vote on it at the action agenda, and if, you know, if you do need more time, then usually, in my experience, board members say, well, I request that we either table that or we defer it to the next meeting. If I have any question about a contract or any legal matter, I definitely am gonna ask that it not be acted upon, but...
And for those type items, they're not going in the packet unless Mr. Johnson's already reviewed it and we've discussed it as administrators with him before it ever gets to the packet. We don't surprise him at the meetings.
But again, this is just me letting the board know that I put something straight to action because that's the policy and I'm following the policy.
And just for clarification, you're saying a new item that you feel is time sensitive could go straight to action?
Could go straight to item where it will be discussed.
There may be a timing with bids where they, a bid is only allowed for so long if there's a weather delay. You know, there are times we move bids directly to act for, to try to speed things up. In those type of situations, that's what we're talking about, when we know that time is already of the essence. Budgets this time of year, sometimes bids, where we're trying to get it done before weather, before a sports season starts, or things like that, where time is of the essence, to go ahead and start there. And again, three members of the board, it's a board collective decision, three members of the board can table something. Or three members of the board can move it to action anyway.
And respectively, I just like the current policy of, you know, three votes can move it to action, you've had your sufficient time to discuss in discussion, that sort of thing. And I understand if you've had it in discussion one meeting, the next meeting, it's in action. That's just my preference.
But that's not policy.
Okay.
Twenty-three ten is policy, where the board chair has that authority to try to streamline our meetings. Not to circumvent anything, just to, we're just making you aware that I did it here because I know it's going to action. And it may happen again at the next meeting. Mr. Robertson?
I like the policy, I think following the policy probably cleans up our meetings a little bit. I think there'll still be adequate time for discussion, if we need more discussion. I don't really see a problem with it, I don't feel like it, Dr. Rice or Mr. Johnson or anybody else on the board is trying to push something through that has not been discussed or is not above board, and... So I'm in favor of the policy as it's written. I think if we wanna make a change to the policy, then that would be up for discussion and bring forth a change. And if you get three votes on it and change it, then that's, that's the new policy of the board. But I'm okay the way it is, and I think we'll, I think we'll still have adequate time to discuss whatever discussion we need. That's all.
Mr. Duncan?
Again, just like the last item, I mean, stay with our current policy as long as we have discussion during the action time. I'm fine with that, and at that point, we have to vote in that action, I mean, three votes either way gets either something pass or fail, so.
Right. Okay, all right, moving on to budget. It was brought to my attention that there's a question about the county manager, he wanted some, he didn't feel like we needed to meet, but yet, there was a lot of inaccuracies in the response he was given to the board.
When the county commissioners presented, they discussed budget at their last meeting last Monday, during which time, he presented his county manager recommendations to the county commissioners for funding for the schools in current expense. He was asked some questions about the budget, and I felt like he might not have had a full understanding of that. Ms. Moore and I met with him and Amanda Brown, Amber Brown, today, and went over those things and cleared those items up. And he was appreciative of the meeting, and we were appreciative of the meeting, and overall, think it went well. During emails and discussion, and then again today, I let him know that traditionally, we have had a joint meeting with the board and the commissioners to discuss budget, and he's indicated that he did not think that would be, that would occur this year. Didn't think it was needed this year. So we did clear up some questions that were there, but still, at this point, they're saying that they do not believe there'll be a joint meeting this year.
I don't wanna speak for the rest of the board, but I would like to have a joint meeting. There seem to be some questions, I mean, we're always told, well, why? So this way, we complete our case, why? We didn't request anything. Now, there's, I mean, again, that's, it takes board consensus to request it. I know there's some budget questions, Ms. Knight, I read the Stokes News where you said you voted against the budget because it didn't adequately meet the needs. Let's have our discussion there, what needs do you feel like we need to meet that we didn't?
I'm just saying, if our, you know, budget discussion that went on is not clearly reflected, I mean, I'm just saying, whether it's our plan, long range plan, you know, I don't wanna see budget matters arise and we ask hastily and make cuts that are not, it's just a, I don't know, I think it's just a lack of transparency there. I tried to address that with the minutes.
But you made your statement last week to the news before we ever approved minutes.
I mean, I had to ask about minutes, I was, you know, anticipating that it could very well be a very cut and dry nothing to it, I'm just...
So you assumed that it would be a cut and dry nothing to it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, we assumed when you said you just wanted to spend more fund balance that that's how you felt, but apparently, you told the Stokes News something different.
And, well, I said what I said, but, you know, I did agree, and if we had those minutes, that, you know, we could be a little more cohesive with working with the county board and be willing to use some of our fund balance. You know, that was mentioned at that Saturday work session, you know, I said I'm up for that. If I thought that would help the relationship or help us, you know, go forth with a smaller request.
But is there, is there a specific need that you, that we're not addressing? In your opinion, I mean, we can still modify our budget, they haven't approved it, is there a specific need?
So is this a review the budget and answer the questions, or is this interrogate shurl?
No, this is just, you put it in the paper, I'm just asking if there's something we missed.
Yeah.
We asked your opinion then, if you've changed and you wanna address something else, we can add it to the budget. It's just a question.
You know, just simply that if our budget is gonna be that tight, that, you know, we don't, you know, we pre-plan and don't react. Like, I just don't wanna see hastily, you know, this happens and now... Like, I just don't want to see hastily, you know, this happens and now we gotta do this and this terrible and we've got to cut here and there and, I don't know, I just don't like the roller coaster ride. I mean, personally, I know it happened, you know, a few years ago, you know, closing more schools and it's really not proven to be a big savings for us. I, I don't know. I just don't like the...
So there's nothing specific you want to add to the budget then, right?
I mean, sure, I mean, there's, I may have wish lists, but, you know, I have to be realistic, I'm sure. And, uh...
Okay.
But I just don't like the reactive type rather than...
Okay, so do you think we should meet with the county commissioners?
I agree with you that we should meet.
Ms. Bennett?
I think so. And I think that what we kind of discussed, and I'm new to everything, as I stated many, many times, is I think that there probably should have been more of the fund balance given. I think that that's probably not going to reflect well, but if we meet with them, we'll see.
Okay.
I think that we could always go back and ask for more money. I know y'all laugh at me when I say things like that, but I wouldn't be, you know, I wouldn't dare shy away to go ask for more if we needed it in the future, if we use more fund balance money.
Right. But I'll get back, back to that because there's an example that, that I base mine on. Mr. Robertson?
I, I definitely think we should meet with the commissioners. We should at least have that opportunity to state our case. And, and I am a little confused about Ms. Knight's statement in the Stokes News that she didn't feel like that our budget adequately took care of our needs for the schools going forward. And even tonight, she's having a hard time trying to figure out, I guess, what she meant by that. Because there was none of that discussed at our budget meeting. The only thing, I think her only, that she didn't like about that is we weren't using fund balance to help, to help balance that budget. And we've had a discussion here about our fund balance. We've had a discussion that, that we wanted to keep our fund balance at about a million five as a minimum. And, you know, we, we talked about how much fund balance we're going to have. If we have, I think right now, unappropriated funds is close to 1.8 million, I think of Ms. Moore. I think that's close right now. And we may have a little bit of savings from this year's budget, two, three hundred thousand, which could put it up at two, 2.1. But with the current funding from the county, they're asking us to put about a million seven or a million eight of our fund balance into our budget in order to balance it. And if we do that, then that's going to leave us with two or three hundred thousand dollars left over. And so I would like to hear the board, you know, how much money do we think we should keep in our fund balance? Is a million five is what we've talked about before? That's where we wanted to stay? Do we still agree that a million five is the right number? Or do we, do we agree to take it down to two or three hundred thousand? I think if we take it down to two or three hundred thousand, we're not being very responsible to our schools. We don't have to have it, just a, just a small emergency. We're, you know, we're going back to the commissioners and trying to get more money. And that's not, that's not, we don't just call up her one day and say, hey, we need it, you know, we need another 500,000. That's going to take some time. It's not, it's not a quick process. So we can either be responsible to our schools and our, and our organization here, or we can do the wishes of the commissioners and, and spend all of our money down. And then it's, and then it's kind of like a kid with mom and dad. If we want, if we need some more money, we got to go ask mom and dad for more money. And I don't think that's putting us in a very good position. Just our payroll, Ms. Moore, can you give us an idea on a monthly about how much our payroll is?
No, I'm talking about...
Roughly?
I won't say now, I've got money, I'm sorry.
But it's in the millions of dollars?
It would be without fund sources.
Yeah, so two or three hundred thousand, we can't pay anything. We're not, we're not being very responsible. And, you know, I've said before at public meetings, you know, I was elected to the school board. And our main responsibility as a school board member is to, is to look after our schools. The county commissioner's main responsibility is to look after the county. They have a lot of other responsibilities that we don't have. They have the sheriff's office. They have all the offices in the, in the government center. They have a lot of their own properties that they have to look after. But we've got seventeen schools. We've got about nine hundred employees. And we've got our own people and we've got our own problems that we have to deal with. And if we do, you know, if they're going to run the school board, then why are we sitting here anyway?
Don't they, don't they give like fifty percent of their budget is ours, right? They give it to us?
It used to, it was about fifty percent, but it's not that now.
Am I the only one that didn't see the, I didn't see her comment in the Stokes News? I didn't see it. But it's no different than going to a beauty shop and expressing your opinion. I mean, in my opinion, if she said what she said, that's her opinion, being on this board or not, it is her opinion.
It is her opinion and she's got a right to make whatever opinion she wants to make.
Right.
But at the same time, sometimes I'll call it political grandstanding. I think that's what it is sometimes. I think we're putting things out there in order to try to make a point or to try to, to try to, to try to sway public opinion one way or the other. And, and that we were never meeting our needs as a, as a board and our budget was never discussed. The only thing discussed was that we weren't using enough of our fund balance. We thought it would be better to put some of our fund balance in and to make it look better for the commissioners. And even now, if we have, if our fund balance comes back at two million or 2.1 million, if we said we wanted to keep it at 1.5, then that leaves us about five or six hundred thousand we could possibly put into our budget. And I wouldn't be opposed to doing that. But I'm not, I'm not in favor of running our budget down to two or three hundred thousand and having that as all the money we got left to spend in case of an emergency. Because that's not being responsible on our part. It's not being responsible to our employees, whether it's teachers or, or other employees. That's, we're not, we're not being responsible at that point.
But the 1.5 wouldn't cover an emergency anyway, correct?
It would help.
It wouldn't cover, but we would still have to ask for more money ultimately.
Depending on the...
Depends on the emergency.
But it's not a policy to keep 1.5, it's your preference. That's, that's correct also.
That was the preference of the board at the last, at the, the last board. That was the, yeah, that was the number the last board as a collective set as what we wanted to get down to when we set last year's budget.
Right.
But again, I don't think they would look at us as being irresponsible if we drained more of that and then said, okay, well, we did this and here's it on paper, here's your proof from our budget, and now we need more. I just don't think that looks poorly at all.
And again, it's just a difference in opinion, you know? I'm not ever here, you know, attacking you if you'd have said, well, my gosh, it's, it's slack on us if we, you know, choose to spend down half of our fund balance before we go to the committee, you know what I mean? Like, it's just wrong or we want to, we want to keep it all intact because they might do X, Y, and Z. Like, there, it's just a difference in opinion, okay?
And, and to, for clarification, I haven't attacked you tonight either.
Okay.
And matter of fact, as you were speaking, I never interrupted you one time.
Well, I apologize if I interrupted.
So, you know, I'm the one that's been speaking and I've been interrupted several times here as I've tried to speak. So I think that's, you know, is that attacking me?
I don't think nobody's...
I think that's, I think that's all a matter of opinion. There's five of us on the board and I think we all have our opinions and we all can do, you know, we can all, and that's what the good thing is about a board, right? We all have to put our opinions forward and then come up with a conclusion as to how we want to go forward. It takes three, it takes three board members to agree to one thing. If we get three votes and we move on to the next thing. If we don't, then, if we don't.
Anything else?
No, I'm, I'm in favor of keeping a fund balance.
So I watched the meeting the other night. The very, very long meeting. I think I looked on the clock, it was about a little five hours, yeah. I did not envy them that night. And I don't want to be here that late tonight. So, I did watch the very end and did have some questions that I emailed to Dr. Rice and, and Ms. Moore. And I do want to, and I'm saying this to say absolutely think we should meet with them. Number one, we have a new county manager. I've never met the new county manager. Now, that, that could be as much on, on me as anybody, but hadn't been up to Danbury, up at the courthouse and to one of their commissioner meetings and since he's been employed. So, and some of the things, again, new to the county, new, I mean, Ms. Bennett, as you've made mention tonight, you're new to the board. I'm still learning, right? And I'm, and I'm, I consider myself still new. And so I think from a new county manager perspective, I would love to go and, and sit down with them and, and we've went every year since I've been on the board. But he made a few comments and I, and I say, I say this, you know, he'd said, you know, that we were asking for increases or, or to our supplement, five percent, three percent to our supplement. Well, that's not what we're presenting. It's, it's in general increases. It was also stated that we have a 3.6 million dollar fund balance, which if you look at the audit in June, we did, but you got to count in the 1.8 that we used last year to balance the budget. So, again, that leaves us with a 1.7 million dollar fund balance-ish. And, you know, one thing that we had talked through in our budget meetings and even, I think the first time it came out on a Saturday as well, is using that. So, they're giving us, I think it's a 2.9 percent increase, if I'm, if I'm thinking right, from last year, which is 15 million and some change. So, you know, you know, it's already been made mention tonight in public comment to, to advocate to the county commissioners. It's hard to advocate when we, as two boards, can't sit down and, and discuss. And it's sad in, in our county that, that two boards can't sit down and, and discuss. You know, I, I, this didn't happen overnight on, on either side. And I think, is it six percent? And don't, I'm not, don't quote me on this, but I think they have six percent of their budget in fund balance, of a 73 million dollar-ish budget. I mean, it's, it's all online for anybody to look at. I think, and we're at, we get 24, 25 percent of the county's budget. But I think there's some things that we need to, to spell out to advocate why we're asking what we're asking. New to the board still, learning where this pot of money comes from and where it goes and, and how, you know, there's, Ms. Moore and, and the finance team do a great job and, and we've talked about that shuffle, and I say shuffling, but to make it work between what the state's giving us and what, what the county's giving us, they, they make all that work. And so I think having her and, and that team to go and speak on behalf, I mean, at least that opportunity. And then we talk about, well, let's spend all of our, our fund balance down. To me and my house, I do not spend everything that I make and then we, well, hopefully we'll make some more next month or, or maybe I can go ask my daddy for some. I mean, I think daddy would give me some. But that's not smart in, in, in financial sense on any scale is to spend it down and then we go ask. At that point, if we're not meeting now, how are they going, how would a committee or a board meet to discuss a need if we're not discussing the preliminary asking? And so then that becomes, well, if they say no to our need, they may, they may think, well, that's not an emergency. Well, then what constitutes an emergency? It's different from, from their perspective as it is ours. I mean, and then you get back and forth and then if they're already in a, in an area to where, you know, how do we cut? Well, do you think that, again, their responsibility is the county, not the schools? So I, I do have hesitation about, and I know as a board, and, and Ms. Bennett, you wasn't on the last when we consensus agreed, Ms. Knight was, I think we all agreed one and a half million is where we would like to be. Is that gospel? No. I mean, it could be $2 if we, three of us agree to it. But I don't think that's, again, smart. But if we do have an emergency, I mean, any large mechanical roofing, some kind of pipe, you're, you're looking hundreds of thousands of dollars easy. And, and I'm sure Richie could, could attest to that. And so, I mean, that's why I would like to sit down, have an opportunity to, I mean, I think it's, everything's due by the June 9th, so we've got May to, to sit down. I, I think that, at least that was on the, on the report online was, I think, June, first part of June, that, you know, it was going to be final. But, but I do think that we need to, to make sure that, okay, we used a million eight last year. We can't continue to do that. We said that last year. That's why we said we're going to have to stop some point. And so, you know, as, as mentioned tonight with, with Ms. Mays, you know, it, that's a, that's a juggling, so you, we ain't getting to this much, what, what do we do? And that's, I think you have to look at every line item at that point. So, I would, long story short, to say yes, I would love to meet and, and discuss not just Stokes County, but, but our, our specific budget. So, I mean, is that something that, I mean, that's up to, to them to agree to. So, I think you've got your consensus, Dr. Rice. Is that, is that right?
Yeah, I mean, it's, because the only thing I'll say is, what you took as an attack was me just asking for clarification because we've got till June 1st. If there's an unaddressed need, tell us what it is, we can discuss it.
Sure.
If the need was to spend more fund balance, just say the need was to spend more fund balance, you know? We're just trying to be totally transparent for everything. And back to going for money, and Ms. Moore was here, Richie was here in 2012, we kept asking for money for a county, from the county commissioners for just a roofing because we had like a hundred thousand dollars in our fund balance. And South Stokes had a leak and on a roof we couldn't afford to fix and it cost an extra $81,000 just to fix the mold in it. And then $300,000 because we had to go up the hill and it took about two weeks to get that whole process rectified. Our buildings, our schools are 40, 50 years old with original HVAC. If you had to replace an HVA system, what would that be, Richie?
If we replaced it all, say, South Stokes High School, $700,000 just brought up.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, if it, if they won't meet with us to talk about the budget, how quick are they going to meet with us to give us an extra four, five? Say we have 300,000, we got a $700,000 bill, how quick are we going to get 400,000 and still have a high school that can't operate because it may be 90 degrees in a classroom? That's the reason, I'm, I'm not saying a million five is our floor. That was the arbitrary number we all kind of agreed on. But the $250,000 is not going to cover, will it cover a boiler at all?
Might cover, cover a boiler.
Might cover a boiler, not going to cover an HVAC. Chiller goes out, maybe not. I mean, just, we're sitting on, on 50-year-old buildings, a lot of them.
Correct, absolutely.
So that's the reason I'm saying we need to have at least enough to react. Now, a million five won't pay, make payroll. But if we get to the point where we can't make payroll, we've got bigger problems. Yeah.
And it's a different board of commissioners, correct now, right? Than what you were obviously dealing with in 2012.
Yeah, and, and since then, it has come up. But the funding has come up, but the needs haven't gone down, so.
And just for clarification, was the board not interested in, or, or was that? The board did not communicate with me. The county manager said he did not believe that there would be a meeting this year. Again, he works for a board like I work for a board. And so, you know, from the consensus, I will make an official request.
And to answer you, all of the, the board members that were there are gone. The only common is Commissioner Morris was the county manager and that was his recommendation at the time. So, and I haven't got a official number that they want our fund balance down too. They, I mean, have, have you heard? I mean, we've heard whispers.
I've heard conversations before, but not a board decision of what they agree that it should be.
Yeah, so we don't even know what it is, so that's from what, what they're anticipating. And then we could argue that point from there, so.
Sure.
I have hopes that the information, I watched that meeting the other night as well and, and I think the county manager had misinformation because he thought our fund balance... balance was going to be in the 3.6 million dollar range. So I think his information was, was inaccurate. So I'm hoping that once they find out that we don't have that kind of money in our fund balance, and it would be unrealistic, I think, to ask us to spend 1.8 of, 1.8 or 2.0 or whatever we have, and only leave us with 200 or 300,000. I can't, I'm hoping that they, once they figure that out, that that's not what they're going to ask us to do. So I have hopes that at the next meeting, maybe they will adjust their numbers, and, and, and maybe it'll be better, but I'm hoping for that, but, you know, I guess we'll see at the next meeting how, how that shakes out.
Well, hopefully we know, come together and find common ground. All right, with that being said, let's move on to action. Approval of coaching, coaching personnel and coaching. I keep wanting to say coaching first, I don't know why.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Ms. Bennett. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Approval of Stokes County budget amendments. Ms. Moore, get ready, because we're about to have discussion. State Public Fund Budget Amendment One, Current Expense Fund Two, Federal Fund Budget Amendment Two, Federal Fund Budget Amendment Three, Capital Outlay Budget Amendment Two. Ms. Moore, I feel we're about to have some discussion. So do I have a motion to approve those following discussion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, discussion. Ms. Moore, could you come to the podium and explain exactly what we're looking at?
Okay, you have the State Public School Fund Budget Amendment Number One. It is increasing the budget by 467, 90271, and this is basically because all during the year, we receive additional allotments from the state. So this is just additional allotments that we've received from the state from all during the year. For example, we've received our summer reading allotment, some additional, there's adjustment in our CTE for, of $1,000. We've gotten some additional money for special needs, the teacher and principal performance bonus, bonus. What was not used there, they automatically decreased that. We've got an additional allotment in transportation, and they adjusted an equipment allotment for transportation. So it was several PRCs or program report codes that make up the 467. Do you have any questions concerning that particular amendment?
Any questions? Okay.
Okay, Current Expense Fund Two, Amendment Number Two. We just received some additional funding from DHHS. We received a dividend for our life insurance, and we received a refund from Scribbles that does our imaging, and that increases the budget by 11,12366.
Any questions? We all like when she says we have more money.
Budget Amendment Number Two for our federal funds actually increases the budget by 38,09133. We received an additional allotment for our CTE. There was an adjustment taken away from our 103 program support, program effective instruction, and also we received additional allotment for our Target Support and Improvement Grant. These were all federal grants that we've applied for, and it's just adjustments that come from DPI with some increases and decreases, but overall, it's increasing your budget by the 38,09133. You also have Budget Amendment Number Three for federal. This was our Title One. We received additional allotment there of $8,028. Capital Outlay Budget Amendment Number Two. We received $1,000 from the NC Department of Environmental for Underground Storage Tanks, and we just had some gov deals that we're adding there, increasing the budget by 1,22391.
I don't have any of this stuff. What would, what would cause the decrease of the Supporting Effective Instruction? Is that, is that like a decrease in a position or something?
It's nothing that we've done on our part. It's just DPI is constantly changing formulas, or I can't really answer that question Pacific, but it's on the Department of Public Instruction end, and they just do adjustments to our allotment. They might figure it one way and then later see that it needs to be either increased or decreased, so it's out of our control on those changes there.
All right, thank you.
Any questions? All those in favor of approval of the budget amendments as, as rectified, certified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Ms. Moore. Item C would be the Axiom helmets. Do I have a motion to approve the Rydell Axiom helmets for the tune of $150,000?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Information announcements. Dr. Jones?
Just a few things I want to inform the board and those watching, both here in the room and online. Our next meeting will be May the 5th. That's a four o'clock start, so please note that on your calendars. Also want to remind you that graduation dates and times are listed in your packet. There has been a change to one event. Special Olympics was originally scheduled to be held this Friday. That's been changed to May the 2nd, which is next Friday due to the potential weather this week. Also have the retirement reception on May the 6th, and then the Solven Water Banquet. Also wanted to remind you, I sent you an email early Friday morning regarding the Habitat for Humanity Wall Build slash Wall Raise Event that'll take place Thursday, that will impact one of our, our students here in Stokes County. And so if you're planning to attend that event, if you'll let me know that, so I can let them know for a headcount to prepare for food, I'd appreciate that. Other than that, you have fundraisers, calendars, and PMR in your packets, and that's all I had, Mr. Chairperson.
No, go ahead. I was just going to ask Ms. Mays if she would, hang just a second, I got a question for you.
Okay.
We're about to wrap up.
All right, with that being said, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
We're out of here.